I'd like to call to order the December 21st, 2015 council meeting. Please stand and Nathan, please give us the invitation.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to conduct city business. Pray that you would be with our actions tonight and help them to be appropriate. We pray for the city and for our administration, for our employees, for all our safety personnel and police. We pray for the children in this community. Pray that as Christmas is coming, that it'll be a positive time for all in this area. We pray for our nation in these troubled times. We pray for wisdom for our leaders. On Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Nathan. Have a real call, please. Councilperson Smith.
Present.
Councilperson Zostovny.
Present.
Councilperson Wadsworth.
Present.
Councilperson Sellers.
Present.
Councilperson Webb.
Present.
Council President Gill.
Present.
Councilperson Julius.
Here.
Councilperson Owen.
Here.
Councilperson Samuel.
Here.
Let the record reflect, all nine members are present. Got minutes from a regular council proceedings of December 7th, 2015?
Motion to approve, second.
Got a motion and second. Any further comments or questions? Seeing all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Can I have approval agenda, please?
There are no changes, motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Claims to be approved. Looks like we have had a recap with us this evening.
I have one claim on page nine. It's for Health and Safety Services for three AEDs. The amount is $4,337. See that one there? We're gonna move that to next year's budget, because that's not an allowable expense out of that account. So, and they don't have any. Not sure. So that changes the total. Unless there's any other questions, do you want to wait till the total?
Wait.
Okay.
I had a question on page four. Actually, two questions. Page four, under, first one, another Finance Department. Internal Revenue Service, $17,100.
That is for some fees that we had from the 2012 1099s.
And that came with that audit that just came out?
Yes.
Fees or penalties?
Mm-hmm.
Penalties, okay.
Does that have to do with the 1099s that came out of, like, people that were paid through claims?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think some of it was, because we didn't do it electronically, we had too many to go, I guess, manually. They wanted us to do it electronically. So, we've changed that process now and everything is electronically, so we don't have those.
And my last question, same page, page four, under the City Council, where we're paying the Treasurer of Clark County, two claims, a total of about $84,000. I'm assuming that's for the...
That's for the elections.
For the elections. Does the, because there was a referendum and because it expanded beyond the city, does the school corporation pay any for that?
I'm not sure of that, but I can check and see. That would be something handled at the county level.
We have a school board member here that's shaking her head yes. Let the record show.
I went through the, I received the claims and went through.
Our portion should only be what the action is for. I like sharing the cost.
Ours was just city.
Thank you.
And on the same subject of the two claims to the county, are those, is one for a primary, one for a general?
Yes.
And why are they two different amounts?
I don't know the answer.
I was just, I was curious. I didn't know if one was, one was for one and one was for the other, I assume, but I didn't know why they would be different. Because we have the same number of coworkers and the same...
I'm just thinking maybe ballots, because then you had to have two separate ballots.
Could be.
Printing costs and...
Do you know which one is which?
Yes, the 36 is primary and the 47...
Nope.
That wouldn't be it.
And that wouldn't be it.
I can run back and get them there.
That's okay. The total, total comes to $83,866.44, and I'm gonna motion to pull that from the claims, because we don't actually have a certified election yet. I think that can be processed after we have a certified election. It's just my personal opinion. That may not be majority opinion, but...
Heather, what, I know you, Amy, actually, you all have the bill and it had to be paid by, Scott, what is your thoughts on that? I think it was, it had to just...
They brought the claims to me, because I submit the claims. So, they had asked that they be paid by December 31st.
We can cut the check and hold it, and so it comes out of your 2015 budget, or we can not cut the check at all until 2016 and whatever your preference would be.
And that was another issue, that we didn't actually budget for this. I don't know, I know state law changed a few years ago that said the municipalities would share in cost of elections, and that's okay, but I don't know, I don't understand what we, how these amounts came to be or anything like that.
You talking about any type of a breakdown on the...
Right. Two elections and the, the one that involved more work, in my opinion, is billed for a cheaper amount. You know, plus we don't have certified final product, so...
Would you be in favor of just holding up the 2,000, I mean, cutting the check and holding it, or you just want to hold it to 16? It's your...
You're gonna wind up paying it.
We're, I mean, we're gonna pay it.
Do you want to ask for a breakdown of the cost from the county?
That's fine. Let's go ahead and leave it in here and cut the check, but hold it.
I will send, I will scan them in and email you all what I received. Just be sure you all open it and look at it.
Was it broken down on the claim?
I believe there's an email that went out with...
No, there was an email with a, that a total had come in, but it wasn't.
Was it broken down?
Yeah.
Was it broken down on the claim? Itemized?
Well, it wasn't for numbers. It had, it was broken down, but it mean it isn't a long list.
Yeah.
It's just, the breakdown isn't as important as keeping, keeping the check until we have a certified election, in my opinion.
Well, just to make sure whoever makes the motion, make that part of the motion.
So, I'd rescind my initial motion to pull the claims. Were there any other questions on the claims?
We just need a new total if there's no other questions.
Okay. What, just the one that I spoke?
Mine is the $4,337.34.
I'd make a motion to approve those on the condition that we hold the check to the Treasurer of Clark County until there is a certified election.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second. Is there any further questions or discussions or comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Heather. Your report of a clerk? Yeah, I just want to say a few things. It's been an honor working with all of you all. Some of you all just for years, some of you all for all four years, and it has been a great honor, and I appreciate everything you all have done for the clerk's office and all I've said. Unfinished business, there's none. There's new business, there is none. Do we have a City Council Attorney Report? There is no department heads here. We do have a public comment. Christina Gilkey, will you please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. My name is Christina Gilkey. I reside at 903 Dogwood Road. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I feel it's imperative to make you all aware of a decision made by the mayor, which has directly impacted 258 city employees. Most of you may have been the Aflac agent for the city for 21 years. Even though I officially retired November 1st, I still greatly care about my clients, my neighbors, and my friends. I'm here because I believe it to be the duty of good people to speak out when politicians abuse their authority. As a matter of transparency, you should know I did try to privately appeal to the mayor, but he refused to meet with me. You should also know that the mayor's decision does impact my monthly renewal income from Aflac. However, I am primarily here because my clients have reached out to me and are upset about the lack of choice that they are now being given in their own benefits. Over 258 employees participate at their own cost, and they have had this opportunity for 37 years. At very recent open enrollment meetings, Aflac participants were blindsided. They were told they would no longer have the choice of payroll deducting Aflac as of December 31st. This action will cost employees over $21,000 in pre-tax cost savings, and it will cost the city over $8,500 in pre-tax cost savings. Furthermore, it's my understanding the city has an insurance committee that was put together for the purpose of making recommendations regarding employee benefits. However, it's my understanding the insurance committee knew nothing about the mayor's decision and were not given any input into that decision. This has occurred because the mayor has given the voluntary benefit services contract to his ex-wife, Vicky Moore. I find this action to be a complete and total conflict of interest, as the mayor still has financial ties to Ms. Moore. Does the mayor have the right to make this decision? I believe he does not, as I find it to be a direct violation of the July 1st, 2012, State of Indiana enacted anti-nepotism law. I was unable to locate any city policy on anti-nepotism, however, I did find national and state mayoral organizations' policies. According to those articles, "Mayors shall never use their official positions to secure unwanted privileges or advantages for themselves or members of their families. Mayors shall not perform any official actions where a direct or indirect financial or personal involvement might reasonably be expected to prejudice their objectivity." My hope tonight is that as a result of this information, each of you will personally work to compel the mayor to rethink his decision and allow the hard-working, faithful employees of the city of Jeffersonville the opportunity to continue their Aflac benefits through payroll deduction. Finally, I would implore you as a council to make sure that we have adopted and developed policies regarding code of ethics and boldly place such on the city website, so as to show our community what we can expect from our local government officials moving forward. And I thank you for your time tonight.
I go to council comment, but before we do that, like, this is our very last council meeting. We've got five that are going off. And we've got, first we got Mike Smith, that has given eight years of service. It's been a pleasure working with you. I know in my four years, you've been a wealth of information, so we'd like to present you with this plaque. Thank you for this, your service to the city. You really looked out for the taxpayers, and I applaud you for that. Next, we have Charles Wadsworth, which was caucused in this year, and being caucused in during election year was tough, but you did your due diligence, and we really respect and appreciate your service to the city.
Thank you very much.
Now, I hope I don't cry during this one, because as you all know, Connie's my buddy. Ms. Sellers. Okay. 12 years, and you all are gonna hear me, I'm gonna channel her, I'm gonna say, "Just saying." But Connie, the four years, I've grown a whole lot just by knowing you and being on the council. You brought a lot of experience. You're not afraid to speak up to the taxpayers. I applaud you, I admire you for that, and for your 12 years of service to this city and for the behalf of the taxpayers. Thank you. Give him a hug.
Tony never got a hug.
She was my meeting buddy. Steve, thank you for your service to the city. We applaud you and we thank you, and as, well, you were caucused in, but it never stopped you. It was hard being caucused in during election year, but you and Tony both, and you met with me several times, you did your due diligence. Even after the election, you still stayed in here till the very end, standing up for the taxpayers, and you represented your district, and I applaud you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Julius. You have brought a wealth of information to this council. Each one of us brings our own experiences, our own, you know, the different views and different aspects to the different, you know, not only of projects and things, but you've been a wealth of information. I had the pleasure of working under you as president, as your vice president, and I can strongly say to everybody here and forthcoming to everyone that follow you, you always had the best interest of this city in your leadership, was always at the forefront, always.
Thank you.
And I applaud you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you read what everybody says? And then we'll clap for them.
It says, "On behalf of the citizens, businesses, the mayor, and city council, thank you for your service in the city of Jeffersonville." And each one had their name and then their position and it is signed tonight, and then by myself for their last council meeting. So, can we please have... Now, for the last time, for your council comments, Councilperson Smith.
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to say is really, be brief, is, of course, I've served two terms, eight years, and I think this council, along with the past councils, have been very fiscally conservative. I think if you look at our budget, what we've done with our budget, and it's not always been easy, and we not, we've not always agreed, but I think we have had a surplus that we have been building for many, many, many years, and I hope the new council, when they look at the budgets and make these decisions, I hope they look at that surplus. One case in point was when we wrecked a fire truck. We had the money to quickly order one, which was a little under a million dollars. So I think the surplus is there to be used for emergencies, not to be used just to balance at hand, and I, but I think this council, again, and the last councils in my years, have really watched our money. And I think that's why the city is in the shape it's in. And I tell people all the time, I think if you really want to know what it's like, I think number one is, you need to run for an elected position, because you will be highly educated. And if you're fortunate enough to win, which you probably will not, but if you're fortunate enough to win, then you're really gonna get education. You're gonna find out the word compromise is a word we don't talk a lot about, but you can get to where you're going, but sometimes you have to give a little to get along. So, it's been eight years, I've enjoyed it, and I hope everybody, you know, just keeps track of the budget. That's it.
Councilperson Edsie.
Yeah, it's been an honor to serve with everybody on this council. It's been a very challenging four years. It's the first council after annexation, where we now have nine members to try to compromise with. Makes it a little more difficult at times. I'm proud at the decisions this council made, standing tough on some vetoes for, I think, the right reasons, saying no sometimes, fiscally, for the right reasons. It's helped make our city strong, and I'm really gonna miss the five members who are leaving, especially my two, I'm gonna lose person to my right and to my left, so. I do want to say, I know Ms. Sellers is gonna make a comment about the fiscal strength of the city and a study that was done, and I want to say, every decision that council makes affects the city in the future. We build on our decisions over the years, and the longer you stay here, the more you realize the decisions you make affect the future and how they affect the future. And I want to recognize a couple people who are willing to stand up during the concept of annexation, that I think really improved our city. I know it was controversial, I know some people still maybe have hard feelings about it, but Ron Grooms, John Perkins, Phil McCauley, Barbara Wilson, who are not here, and Connie, who is here, and then Nathan came soon after, thank you for, I want to thank them all for the tough decisions that put us, helped put us in a financially good position. And I want to thank this council for all the tough decisions we made and all the friendships I've made over the last four years. Thank you.
Councilperson Wadsworth.
Well, as you know, I'm a person of few words, but, most of the time, that is. But I would just like to thank the people of Jeffersonville and my colleagues on the council, the clerk, the attorneys, and all the support staff for what I think to be an exemplary example of dedication to public service. I have been most impressed by everyone's, oh, I, I don't know how to express it, everyone's dedication and dedication to public service and dedication to work. This is a very hard-working group, and so I just thank you all for the opportunity, citizens of Jeffersonville, and I just want to say to my colleagues, thank you. I'm honored to have served with you.
I'd like to say one more thing before we get to Connie. You know, there's been conversations, but I don't know if it's been at a public meeting, so I want to bring it up. We're looking to do a council retreat for the new council that's coming up. The date's gonna be July 9th, and I've asked Mr., I'm sorry, January, January, not, not July, January 9th, it's a Saturday, it's gonna be an all-day retreat, so I just want to put that in the, in the public domain and make sure that Mr. Lewis has it to advertise. It's gonna be, it's gonna be 8:30 at the Ken Ellis Building. All right. 8:30, yeah.
Counselor, do you want to go last?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilperson.
Oh, well, I'd like to, it's been a pleasure working with you guys. I'll tell you what, it's been an honor and a pleasure. I, I've enjoyed it, I've learned a lot. It's been a heck of a ride, I can tell you that, especially the last seven weeks, but I want to welcome the new council members. I see a few of them out there present, and if you got any questions, you got a good core up here to ask any questions to, but that's all I want to say, and thank you.
Councilperson Julius.
I think everybody's kind of said it, but I've enjoyed my four years on the council, made a lot of good friends, feel like we work together well. As Mike said, you know, maybe we didn't always agree, but we always compromised and we found a way to come to the right decision or the decision that worked best for the city. The other thing that I would tell everybody, sitting on that side, if you haven't run for office, it's something that everybody needs to do, because it's a humbling experience. It really is. And 50% of the decisions you make usually upset somebody. So, we all experience that. You get a lot of phone calls and you get a lot of questions that really make you ponder sometime and really think. And coming from the business world, you know, we can turn around and make a decision, and here on the council and through the political arena, wheels move a little slower, and that's something that you have to get used to. I really enjoyed, believe it or not, working with the fire and police contracts. You know, it was, it was a sure, a learning experience, and feel like we made some good changes, and there again, we compromised, and it was good for the city, it was good for the police, it was good for the citizens, but again, it was a learning experience, and to me, that's what it's been, and I appreciate all of the knowledge from some of the senior council people being able to openly share their knowledge with some of us younger, not younger in years, council members.
Yeah, watch it.
But giving us some of their knowledge and learning the budget from a, you know, municipal side opposed to a business side, there's big changes there, there's big differences. So, I thank everyone.
Councilperson Owen.
Could certainly echo everything that's already been said. Just want to thank everybody for the first term. I know we've certainly not all agreed all the time, but, but it has been an enjoyable experience and very much a learning experience. I also wanted to say thanks to all of our staff in the, in City Hall, outside of City Hall. We have a lot of very talented, very dedicated people that work here, and the clerk as well. The clerk has a, does a lot to support us and plays a very important role. It's kind of, kind of strange for me, I've joked a little bit about this since Election Day, but it is very strange for me to see Connie and Mike Smith leaving, because you all have been here since, since I was in the back corner back there, and I, again, we've not always agreed, but I think that you both have done a tremendous service to your respective districts, and it's not gonna be, definitely isn't going to be the same without you, and I appreciate all the work that you've done here. So, thank you.
Councilperson Samuel.
Just one announcement first. We have our new director of planning and zoning in the, in the audience tonight, Nathan Pruitt. Stand, stand up, Nathan, so everybody can see you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Want to point you out, and certainly I echo what was said. What people don't realize is, is you get into this, actually, Ron Grooms told me originally, he said, "You don't want to be friends with, with your fellow councilmen." He said, "Because that, it makes it very difficult." Well, that's, that was impossible for me, because I, he got in and you spend so much time with, with most of these folks, the ones who get involved in the committees and things, and, and I just appreciate the time that I've been able to be, to spend with you guys and gals. You know, being on the council takes a lot of effort. It requires you to be away from your families a lot, and I see Mike Smith's wife, Kathy, in here, she's given up a lot for his service. See Connie's husband in here, Steve, he's given up a lot for her service. You're gonna get them back now, so you may have to find something for them to do. But we, just, I do appreciate the effort and the time you guys put into it and the friendship that we have forged over the years. I think Jeffersonville's better for, for your service. Go ahead.
Councilperson Sellers.
Well, I echo everything that everyone else has stated. I've been around for 12 years, which seems like forever, in a good way, and I've enjoyed working with all the different council people throughout the years, you know, from John Perkins, which I, I know some people, you either love him or you, or you don't, but it took us a few months, but even on that council, we were, we were able to come together and work together, which is very, very important. And then on the next council, and of course, this council, so I've enjoyed working with everyone. I enjoyed working with the people, working with all the department heads. Kim and I are friends, I really enjoyed, I'm gonna miss her, not too much, but you know, not, not enough that I would, I still would want to be here. But it's been, it's like Ed said, if you, when you run for office, you think it's gonna be one thing, and you think you can do whatever you want, well, I've got, and people think we can do whatever we want, our constituents? Yeah, no, you can't. The state tells us what we can do and what we can't do, and there are a few things that we can do on our own, but most of it, we have laws we have to follow as well.
The council tells you what you can't do also.
Yeah, that's true. So I've got a few things, I'm just gonna read this little thing, sorry, Matt, and, and go through a little bit of my history here. I never thought when my family moved to Jeffersonville in 1995, that a short eight years later, I would be asked to run for public office. I was homeschooling my children, and it was through our homeschooling group that I was introduced to the Clark County Republican Party and all 20 people who made up the group, because that's just about all there was at that time. For those of you who now think that we ran, ran the county, back then, it wasn't like that. It was an exciting time for the Republican Party and the Clark, and Clark County. My husband and I, when, when we did get together with the Clark County chairman at that time and, and asked him, I didn't know anything about city council, I knew about the... and asked him, I didn't know anything about city council, I knew about the president, I knew what Congress did, I had no idea what city council did. We were told, "Don't worry about it, it's just part-time, you meet twice a month," you know, "it's the fiscal body, and you're responsible for the budget, but don't worry about it, because it's really already set in stone, it's mostly payroll, all the budget, most of the budget goes to salaries, so there's really not a lot to do." I was told it was part-time, wouldn't take up too much of my time. Fast forward to my first year in office, I was told correctly, there were two meetings each month. What was neglected to be told me was that there were other meetings besides the two regularly scheduled council meetings. We were also placed on different boards, I served on the Board of Public Works and Safety for two years, I was liaison with the animal shelter and the drainage board, I became very involved with the sewer board, Ed will remember that, much to everybody's chagrin, and believe it or not, the issues with the sewer has been in the news for the, for at least twelve years, and probably longer than that, for those who just think it just happened in the last four years, it's been the past twelve years we've been dealing with the sewer issues. I want to thank everyone who encouraged me to run for office. First and foremost, my family, my husband and my children, now I'm gonna cry, and I'm really happy. You know, they campaigned for me, I'm gonna tell this story, just because it's funny. My children are all back there, and the first year I ran, I didn't have anyone go door-to-door with me, there were only twenty Republicans, so my kids went with me, and they were a lot younger than they are now, and I told them, I said, "I will pay you ten cents, don't ever do this, for every door you put my little fire on." Yeah, when we, when each of them got you a hundred dollars, that was it. I did not realize how many apartments there were in Jeffersonville, and then I found out, I actually put some on Keith's betas, so they got paid for doing stuff that didn't even help, but helped me. They campaigned with me, they came with me to all the political functions, both with the party and both with city, even though they really didn't want to attend, and they have graciously supported me these past twelve years. I also want to thank Senator Rongrins, but however, it's very interesting to think now that he didn't want to be my friend.
I didn't tell that either.
I want to thank Senator Rongrins and his wife Beverly for mentoring me, as well as Phil McCauley and Ed Sisstopney, and basically, I want to thank Ed for running in my district at least three times?
Twice.
Twice, and even though he was defeated, he set it up so I could win in 2004, at least that's his story, that's what he tells me about it. And the one thing that I am most proud about during my tenure is the legacy of leaving behind a financially sound city. When we came in in 2004, there were numerous issues, the health insurance, it was horrible with the city. We were having to take out bonds to pay, tax-warrant bonds, to help pay the bills for the city. It was not, it was not good, and with the help of Ron Grooms, and Phil McCauley, and Ed, and John, and Keith and Barbara, we were able to make it through to where we are today. The Indiana Fiscal Policy Institute released a study a few weeks ago, and it compared eighteen cities with a population greater than fifty thousand, and this group included Jeffersonville and New Albany, just because they wanted to provide a geographic balance to the study, because most of the cities were north of us. These cities included Anderson, Elkhart, Fort Wayne, Hammond, Muncie, Terre Haute, Bloomington, Evansville, Gary, Kokomo, Noblesville, Carmel, Fishers, Greenwood, Lafayette, and South Bend. I'm not gonna read the fifty-two-page report for you, you can look it up online, but there's a couple of points that I want to make. It says, "Jeffersonville appears to have benefited from the large annexation which occurred in 2006 to 2009 period. While its revenues have increased in real terms, its expenses have also increased significantly due to the additional responsibilities to provide service in the newly annexed territory." But, and then it goes down, and it says, "The total net property, with circuit breaker adjustments and pension levy adjustment, and income tax revenue in 2015, adjusted for inflation as a percentage of the 2008 total, Jeffersonville was in the number-one position in the state." And that's thanks to the councils from 2004 on. That's just not this council, because it's just like Mr. Z said, or Mike said, I'm sorry if I'm getting everybody confused, it's a building on of each year, and spending efficiently. Another thing that we did that some of these cities did not do, and I remember Ron Grooms talking about the circuit breakers, we had to be prepared, so one thing we did, we built in the circuit breaker money, we made sure that we had the money to cut off the circuit breaker, and that we were not going to be hurt financially in that way. We asked our department heads, "Please do not spend the money that's in your budgets until we know what the circuit breakers were." They, they did what we asked them to do, sometimes they didn't want to, and I understand that, but they did, and we were able to make it through, and we were one of the cities who made it through the best, and I'm very proud of that. Another item that it, that it says, and this is very important, we talk about fund balances, and we talk about how much money we have left in the general fund at the end of the year, and in our rainy day fund, and there are people who want to spend that money. Well, this group says this, "One of the most important measures of fiscal health of the unit of government is the level of cash balances at year-end that it is able to maintain. Such fund balances, particularly in the general funds of the respective municipalities that are being examined in this study, are an important indicator that annual revenues are keeping pace with annual expenditures. They also reflect a municipality's ability to respond to unforeseen and thus unbudgeted expenditures arising from emergencies and other extraordinary demands on this unit. Some municipalities choose to support an operating reserve by carrying substantial year-end balances in the general fund, some choose to provide for such a reserve by carrying a balance in the rainy day fund, and others choose to do both, which is what the city of Jeffersonville does." What I found interesting about this is, South Bend and Elkhart carried over a lot more money than we ever have, like thirty million in their budget, but at the end of the study, Jeffersonville was still ranked number-one in fiscal responsibility. So, thank, don't thank us, but thank Senator Grooms, and Phil McCauley, and Nathan, and everyone through the years where we have built this up, so that the city can be sound financially. So when you hear that we're in the newspaper, and people are mad that we're not spending money, and we're not allowing certain things to happen, or we're trying to control spending, this is the result, you have a fiscally sound city. I wanted this on record before I left office, that the three previous councils have done their best to ensure that the city is fiscally sound. We've made cuts, we've not hired as many people as the mayor, not just this mayor, but previous mayors have, would have liked. We've not instituted departments that were not necessary, that would have cost the city money that it did not need to spend. This fiscal burden will now be passed on to the new council, congratulations, for those of you who are out here. I hope that you, and I know that you will take your responsibilities seriously, and I hope that when you leave your office in this city, that it will be left in a better position than it was when you first took office, just as it has been done today.
I just want to add that, I think many of you all have said it, but sitting in this position, sitting in these seats, it is not an easy job, and you all will agree with that. It's a very rewarding job, I stay close with my constituents, and I know there's going off, I know for a fact that Connie and Mike Smith have too, that's important, we never lose sight of that, but I know that you will read things in the paper that we're anti-progress or whatever, but no, we're just doing our jobs, we're being fiscal responsible, it's our, that's our job, it's separation of powers, we have to watch that bottom line, we gotta keep a, you know, a close eye on the, especially the cash balance, it's very important, whatever's carrying over going in. And this council, it's, my first term here, so this is the council that I know, and I will, I gladly stand beside, behind, and with this council, because fiscal responsibility has been job one, and everybody's done an excellent job, and also to the clerk, being my first term with this, you have, this has been the first position for this, because it's been a Class II city, we weren't quite sure what this position would entail, and you've had a lot of responsibility, but you've really looked out for the council, and we appreciate that. We thank Heather. Not always easy when you gotta deal with nine of us, but your department's done it very well. And once again, I just want to thank you all for your service to the city, and I hate to go out in a note, but we did have Christina Gilkey spoke during public comment. I'm on the insurance committee, and I wasn't aware of any of this, of course, we're not the administrative, but I do have a concern for our, the employees of the city, they did have a policy that they were paying for, did, were they, did they receive information, a 1-800 number, or do they know exactly, okay, okay. Kim's shaking her head yes, so. There is a 188, something, way that they can contact Gilkey?
The employees that I spoke to said that the only information they had was, the original information they had of mine as their Aflac representative. I know some of them have went to the New Albany office for assistance, but there is a toll-free number, all they have to do is call, and get their policy switched over via a phone call, it's easy.
Do you have that 1-800 number that we can?
I do.
You come to the podium and just give us the 1-800 number?
Um, you want me to just read it off to you real quickly?
Yes, please.
Up at the podium.
Up at the podium, please. We don't, like I said, the council, we don't do...
It's called the Aflac Portability Line, and that number is 1-866-622-3811.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
We'll make sure that that, they do have that information. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Someone's...
To adjourn.